Stand by, Mayor. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene City Council Success Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency, Westminster Housing Authority meeting right now, 2:11 PM, Wednesday, November 11, 2020. Roll call.
Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Next, we have salute to the flat will be Mayor Ta, vacation will be Councilmember Nguyen. And today is Veteran Day, so on behalf of the City Council, we'd like to honor all our veterans who've been sacrificed for our freedom. So please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Please bow your head for invocations. Heavenly Father, Provider of Strength, we pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interest of our city and all its citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. Next, report from City Club.
I'm sorry, I believe the city attorney first.
Oh, city attorney, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We have no report this evening from closed session. However, I would make an announcement. At a special meeting last week, the city council has directed the posting of the position of city manager. It is on our website and available at the city clerk's office for any potential applicants. The posting has been posted statewide. The last day to apply for this position is Monday, December 7th at 5:30 PM in the city clerk's office of city hall. The resumes are confidential. The new city council, after being sworn in, will review and decide what applicants will be interviewed. The council will then, after those interviews, select a potential city manager, and thereafter, the city attorney would, through council direction, negotiate an appropriate contract and bring that back for council approval at a regular city council meeting. Those councils candidates selected for the interview will have a background check performed for any criminal history. The city attorney will not be performing any qualitative determination regarding these applications. That will be the city council's responsibility to go through their qualifications and their references. We will go through this process, present the resumes to the city council, and the new city council as soon as the application period has closed. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Next, we have expedited communication, none, and report from City Club.
Nothing to report tonight.
We don't have any special presentation. Next, oral communication.
Okay, I have no ecomments submitted, so at this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak, excuse me, please raise your hand. I have Terry Rains. And yeah, at this time, if anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Terry?
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you to all who have served our great country. No ceremony here in Westminster again. What a shame. Item 5.5 is yet another amendment plus another one to one and a half year extension to Steve Sheldon's ENA. The city never responded to my request for a legal opinion from the city attorney as to why the fact that the this ENA expired on July 28, 2020 has been ignored. The city had no further obligation to Sheldon after that date. Any agreement entered into after that date should have been a brand-new agreement, and it would fall under AB 1486, which would offer more protections to the city and its taxpayers. But Sheldon doesn't want that. The city has failed to enforce the terms of the ENA for one, which could present legal challenges down the road. Sheldon has repeatedly lapsed on deposit requirements. The current work working document was signed on September 11, 2019. Sheldon was required to present conceptual plans 45 days after that date, but didn't do so until 336 days later. He was also required to hold community meetings and take public comment on these new conceptual plans, which has not happened. He was also supposed to present a detailed financial and funding source report with commitments from surrounding property owners 60 days prior to the expiration of the ENA period. What we finally saw on August 12th of this year is a joke. Sheldon outright lied about having a $5 million commitment from Coastline Community College, and you've heard plenty from the college about that lie. He also alleges another $1 million would come from, quote, "part grants, naming rights, grants, et cetera," end quote. Seriously? We had been told repeatedly that this project will not cost the city and taxpayers one dime. Wrong. The city is paying up to $10,000 for a Phase 1 environmental assessment and another $50,000 to $100,000 for a space study using police station bond proceeds. Guess who pays for the community facility district Sheldon is proposing? Yeah, the homeowners, AKA the taxpayers. How does adding a $0.25 annual tax yield affordable housing? How about the countless hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars of staff time that has been spent babysitting this developer and bending over backwards for him? There are two possible outcomes here, a disposition and development agreement or a standalone purchase and sale agreement, or a massive lawsuit, given how unclean this entire process has been. This property is the only valuable asset the city, AKA Westminster taxpayers, own. It is your job as elected officials and city staff and attorneys to protect the city's assets and make decisions that benefit the residents and taxpayers of this city, not yourselves or some shady developer who is a campaign donor and private cheerleader for some of you. How about you ask us, the residents and taxpayers of this city, what we want to see in our new civic center and how we feel about Steve Sheldon? Stop this madness now. Mayor Ta called a special in-person closed-session meeting, which is 24 hours' notice, three business days ago, hoping council members who actually work for a living wouldn't make it. And sure enough, Councilman Doe was unable to attend. Councilman Contreras did make it and voted no, but the gang of three had already made up their minds. They voted to circumvent the normal recruitment process of using a professional search firm to find a city manager. Instead, they decided they would do it all themselves because they are such experts, right? We've seen the criteria they use to select the best, quote-unquote, candidate, race, remember Chu Tai? Not qualifications, job history, and actual experience, which now the attorney tells us he won't be verifying. It'll be up to council. Why bother paying for a research firm when you already know who you're going to hire, right? Especially if they're not qualified. This search is probably just a formality, and I hope I'm wrong, but like last time, I will fully vet your selection and share my findings with the public, the media, and city staff. You have shown us repeatedly that you cannot be trusted to do the right thing for our city. You will stop at nothing to advance your political careers and personal agendas. Isn't that right, Vice Mayor Ho? Your election fraud antics made the TV news. It's nothing new, though. You did the same thing during the recall election, but this time, the authorities decided to investigate. Even if nothing comes of it, it was priceless seeing election officials, the DA, and the police, you know, who endorsed and supported your campaign, at your business on Election Day and seeing it all over the news. Nam Quan Nguyen was running a similar operation out of his campaign office. Councilman Nguyen and others advertise it freely on Vietnamese media. Their attorney, Len Quy Quynh, who lives in Garden Grove, even bragged about turning in his family's ballots over to Nam Quan without completing the third-party return envelope designation as required by law. As I promised before, I am watching every move you make, every action you take, and every word you speak. Look for more investigations to come. You can bank on that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Devora Mariscal.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you to those of you who have served our country. I just have two things that I would like to address the council. Number one, when we are looking for a city manager, I have to agree with Terry Rains that race should not be a qualification. I am very concerned that non-Asians may not be treated or looked at equally. And I want to make sure that we absolutely get the best person for the job, not based on what their ethnicity is. The second is regarding the potential sale of the property. The center is the only thing that we own. It's the only thing of value. And I, I'm extremely concerned as to what might happen to the city if that is sold. Based on past city council meetings, we've had numerous people who have stated our opinions that we do not want the property sold. We do not want this to move forward, but you seem to push this through anyway, and it is not what we want. I would like to see the entire city given the opportunity to voice our opinions without, without advertisements on Asian Network TV that are local just to Westminster, the, you know, Orange County area. I would like to see it be something that is equal for everybody. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. So just for the record, we have, we had some audio streaming issues for the broadcast, so there's going to be some part of the meeting that won't, that if you weren't able to hear, it's because we had some technical difficulties, but this is recorded, so we'll have this backup on YouTube as well as, you know, rebroadcast and on the city's website in the morning for the parts that you didn't hear. So next speaker is Steve Sheldon.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did have a PowerPoint that I was planning to present. Would I be able to use part of that for this presentation?
No, unfortunately, no. We weren't doing PowerPoints or presentations for, or communications.
I just learned that. Okay, so I'd like to thank the mayor and the council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk for, I believe it's a five-minute public comment section. And part of the comments that I intended to make was to update the council on some of the activities that have been going on. And before I do that, I just wanted to just go, just touch again on the general plan for this Civic Center District envisions ways to enhance and to activate the Civic Center area through the taking of municipal buildings and bringing them together to build a new, perhaps, city hall, to introduce residences into the Civic Center area, to activate and to make it more alive. And that's a vision that was in the newly adopted general plan. Our project is mindful of the general plan framework. We've been working good faith negotiations for the betterment of all the residents and all the parties. And one of the key things that we've had is that we're not, that there's no tax dollars involved, and we've completely paid for everything, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars along the way. The benefits of the project, whereas one of them is that we're, again, we're going to implement the vision of the general plan. Our performance shows that we will provide a one-time payment of $3.5 billion. We want to include some family and youth resource center aspect to a new city hall building that can be a comfortable place for youth and others to study, to congregate, to socialize. And as it relates to the Civic Center proper, our proposal involves taking an asphalt parking lot that, by and large, is not used by Westminster residents and putting affordable housing on it and market-rate housing on it. And the rest of it would be also including a 1.6-acre beautiful peaceful passive park. We intend to pull out concrete and add another acre point four of community park between the courthouse and the parking structure. So we think of a lot of benefits that go beyond a purpose-built city hall building that, of course, is a benefit in itself, considering just the age and was needed with the current building. I want to update the council on Coastline, and I can provide this. I wish you could be seeing it. We did meet on Friday of November 6th with Vice President Christine Nguyen. She reiterated that the Coastline had allocated up to $3 million in measuring bond proceeds to acquire surface parking to serve the Westminster campus. And she also stated, you know, while they are generally neutral to the proposed redevelopment project, they will continue to advocate with the city, the county, and the community to ensure that they maintain affordable parking for students at their campus. And she appreciated us meeting again, and she encouraged us that we would reach out again and that her and I would schedule regular meetings. And of course, she has her staff in the meeting, and I do as well, and we meet on Zoom. So that was a positive update from Coastline College. The, I would just say, I was going to skip here, just that I would, I had intended to provide my performance report to the council, which was required in our exclusive negotiation agreement, our Second Amendment, and unfortunately, I'm not able to do that. I would ask that the council, in considering the ENA and considering the staff report, that they would instruct that Phase 5, which is the entitlement secret part, and that is in the schedule, it's on page two and three of your staff report, they take Phase 5 and allow it to move up, that it can commence tomorrow, and it would run concurrently with Phase 3 and Phase 4, so that we'd be able to do concurrent processing on the project, and that would be done while other technical studies are being done. And that would significantly reduce the schedule and streamline the project. I'm available for any questions on that, if anyone has any, when that matters brought up. Our second request would be that the staff, that we direct, the council direct staff to finish the financial feasibility report for the cost and revenue per forma for site plan A and B. And I believe it's been worked on and somewhat, and I would hope that it could be finished in 30 days and come back with the report. So those are two items that I would ask, if the council's pleasure, and hear from staff on that, that we could continue pushing forward. There's been a lot of comments made that I would love to respond to, but I know that we all would have loved to have an event for our veterans because of COVID, but we can't do that. A lot of things that we can't do now. And so we all need to take that into remembrance and remember ourselves and with our families, the veterans that have served our country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker?
I have no other speakers.
All right, so with that, we have, we have consent calendar. All matter, listener, the consent calendar, I can see the routine, and maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member of City Council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent calendar. Roll call vote.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That motion carried 5 to 0, and again, that motion was made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Councilmember Doe.
We don't have public hearings tonight. Next item, 5.1, a Brewer purchase order to RJ Noble Company for street improvement on Bolsa Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to brew item 5.1.
That was a motion made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho, and that recommendation, the purchase order in the amount of $147.47 for street improvements on Bolsa Avenue. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Doe. Shaking his head, yes.
Yes, yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Anemia.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next item, 5.2, allocation of fund for the acquisition of Cascade Park from the State of California Department of Transportation. May I have a staff report? I believe that then, there, I think the city council, we need to understand, this is the park all by the state, and our city, we are buying a park, so may I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, good evening. This is Marwan Yusuf, the Public Works Director. So Cascade Park, as it is now, it's a land lease from Caltrans, and the lease is going to expire in February 2021. Caltrans informed us of the end of lease coming up, and they said that it's a state policy now. They're trying to get rid of all the state-owned land that our cities are leasing from. Therefore, the city would have to buy it from the state if we want to keep the park. Of course, we went through the process, and we came to the council before to get authorization for the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the state, and we have been doing that since. We got an appraisal done, and luckily, we got that appraisal at a $91,200 for a piece of land as big as Cascade Park. So that was a good, good deal for us. The state asked that 10% of the money be paid, and we already forwarded that to them. This will give us the entire park. We have to, we have to confirm or attest that this land will only be used for a park purpose for the next 15 years at least. After 15 years, the city is free to do whatever they want to do with the land. So what we're here asking tonight is to get authorization from the council to allocate money from the park dedication fund toward this purpose. The CTC, I'm sorry?
I can move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Where are we getting?
Can we buy two?
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yep.
Um.
You have any question?
Yeah, where are we getting this money from again?
It's from the unallocated park dedication fund.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. Which is, I haven't seen that before, so, okay, that's great.
Councilmember Doe, you have any question?
Can we buy two?
No. This is really a great deal for the city. And, you know, if you take the size of the land and the price per acre, it's really, really a great deal, and we were lucky to.
Yeah, this is a good item, so we have a motion, a second, okay.
I really don't think we need to be convinced. I think make any more land, so, I mean.
All right, we have a motion and a second for this item.
I got, I got Councilmember Contreras who made the motion. I didn't catch.
Second, yeah.
You seconded, okay. And so that's the recommendation to approve the allocation funds for the acquisition of Cascade Park from the State of California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, in the amount of $91,200. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
I'd just like to add that I certainly appreciate city staff being diligent, making sure we secure park space here in Westminster. It's very limited, and we don't have much of it. And I know in our Parks Master Plan, there is a call for this space, so I'm very excited and, you know, honored to be able to be part of this, to make sure that we secure open space for our community, so that's a yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried 5 to 0.
I have one question. Can I have one question? Maybe Mark Juan can answer that. Okay, so the condition, we have to keep that as a parkland for 15 years. And after that, we can do whatever we want. We sent city ordinance that we can mandate and make sure there's going to be parkland for forever?
I believe that's up to the city, but as far as the state is concerned, what we do with it after 15 years, it's up to the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item, 5.3, Success Agency Resolution Approving the Success Agency 2020 Tax Allocation Refunding Bond Official Statement and Continuing Disclosure Certificate for refunding of the Westminster Redevelopment Agency Commercial Redevelopment Project Number 1, 2011, Tax Allocation Bond to the Insurer of the Success Agency 2020 Tax Allocation Refunding Bond. So may I have a staff report? I believe that it was relating to the issue of ADA was terminated in the year 2011.
Good evening, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Ho, councilmembers. We have Kurt Krennis with Columbia Capital that's here and can give a short summary of this item.
I'm here. I'm trying to undo my video here. It's not doing it. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a follow-up item to the approval that was received in September to move forward with the issuance of the refunding tax allocation bonds, refunding 2011 bonds. The, in, at that time, original approval, the item was also submitted to the successor agency. I mean, the Oversight Board, which, the Orange County Oversight Board, which approved the item, about two weeks later, and then the item has then been sent up to the Department of Finance for approval. Approval by the State Department of Finance is expected at the end of this month. The item before you today is a resolution approving the bond official statement. That's the remaining document that needs to be approved by the successor agency board. Once approved, and presuming the State Department of Finance approves the issuance, which we expect they will, is expected that bonds will be sold in early December to refinance the 2011 bonds. And as you recall, in addition to refunding the 2011 bonds, the, there was about $10.7 million of unspent bond proceeds from 2011 that will be also applied to reduce that debt. So there'll be substantial reduction of that debt. And the net effect of all this is there'll be significant savings generated from this financial transaction. The savings are expected to be, 9.54% of the savings are expected to be received by the general fund of the city of Westminster. So to put some numbers on that, it's in your staff report. So to put some numbers on that, it's in your staff report. Uh, the, the benefit to the city of Westminster's general fund should be about eighty four thousand a year through twenty twenty seven and about sixty two thousand dollars a year after that for a total of about two point two million dollars over the remaining term of the bonds as a result of uh, refunding the two thousand eleven bonds. And that's, you know, essentially what's before you, the, the, the bond market overall is, is, you know, pretty good right now. And we expect that the results will be as presented in the staff report and hopefully better.
Thank you so much for your report. Any question or concerns from member of the city council? I'm not uh, sure that the city council aware of that, but uh, our city, we no longer have the oversight for our successor agency. Am I right? Eric?
That's correct. The, the oversight board is with the uh, county now.
Okay, thank you. I hope that it goes so, is aware of that. Okay. So may I have a motion? I move as recommended.
My second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second of floor, okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. And that is to move as recommended, which is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the successor agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency confirming the issuance of tax allocation refunding who then addressed approving preliminary and final official statements and continuing disclosure certificate and providing for other matters relating thereto. Uh, so roll call vote, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next item, five point four, city council success agency investment policy update. So may I have?
Have a staff report?
Yep.
Sure, this is um, our annual update of our investment policy and um, it's pretty minor. There are three items in this update that have changed and it's to follow state code. The first item changes the limit for commercial paper from twenty five percent to forty percent. If you have over a hundred million in your portfolio, which we don't. But uh, again, this is to follow state code. So we want to update our policy um, accordingly. The second item is a precautionary measure mostly um, to deal with a negative interest earnings. So other countries have had negative interest in, um, in the past and our policy didn't allow for that. So if that were to happen here, which unlikely. And if it were to happen, it would be more on a bank, a local bank level or on a sweep. Um, this would give us the ability to keep our money at the bank. Um, without this language, we wouldn't be able to do that. And both of these items end in uh, January first of twenty six. And the third item changes our life balance um, limit from sixty five million to seventy five million. Currently, the city has twenty seven million in life and another uh, one point eight million in the successor agency. So we're not even close to that limit. Otherwise, everything stays the same.
Any question or concerns from member of the city council?
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second for this item.
Yes, that motion made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta. And that is to a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, amending the statement of investment policy. So roll call vote, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next item, five point five, civic center project update and third amendment to the Lucy negotiating agreement with Sheldon Development MFC. So stop report please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce our consultant. He'll be providing the staff report tonight, Mr. Bill Kelly of Kelly Associates Management Group.
Mayor and City Council, um, in terms of a discussion about the project in twenty seventeen, the city issued a request for a proposal for a potential development partner to imagine a new civic center in alignment with the city's general plan for a vibrant walkable mixed use district. In July of twenty seventeen, the council entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement called an E N A with Sheldon Development to go forward. At the August twelfth, twenty twenty meeting, uh, the developer presented two options for development. The city council discussed that at length and extended and night for ninety days, the E N A with the developer to, and direct his staff to provide an analysis of the information which was presented. The proposed project by the developer generally includes demolition of city hall and the council chambers, construction of a new city hall and council chambers, potentially as a standalone building or as a smaller annex to the police department or within the police department, construction of a hundred and three housing units, removal of surface parking and modifications to the civic center open space. Additional information was presented by the developer with regard to financing the proposed project, including a community facilities district, obtaining grants and naming rights fees, use of impact fees and funding to be provided by Coastline Community College in ex- in exchange for exclusive parking lots, parking rights, excuse me, in a portion of the parking structure south of the police station building. Um, the information provided was for a framework for transactions, both fiscally and technically between the city and the developer and between the city and other entities such as Coastline Community College. Uh, the next phase involves additional information gathering and decision making. Uh, plans A and B as submitted by the developer were conceptual in nature have not been reviewed in comparison to all the general plan and zoning code requirements. And the fiscal information submitted needs to be reviewed further based upon studies still in process. Uh, assisting on this project is uh, my firm, Kelly Associates Management Group, uh, Jim Rabey of Kaiser, Kaiser Marston Associates and Dana Privet of Kimberly Horn. Uh, the team has developed a series of tasks and phases to be completed with timelines and the executing party. Now go over these things briefly. Task number one was the issue of the RFQ, which has now been complete by the city. Task two, excuse me, phase two, develop, select developer and initiate E N A. That's been complete by the city. Phase three is a series of studies and reports. The first one is an appraisal, which is due to the city by November twentieth, November twenty twenty. That's it to be done by the city. Phase one environmental is due December twenty twenty, again controlled by the city. The next one is a parking master plan for the entire civic center and adjacent properties. That's to be done by the end of February twenty twenty one. The original E N A calls for the developer to commence that work and pay for it. And that'll be in conjunction with city staff coordinating. The next is a space needs analysis of city hall. Determine the appropriate space, whether it be inside the police station, police station and, and city hall annex or some other standing alone city hall. Part one of that study is due in January of twenty twenty one. Part due is due March of twenty twenty one and the city is responsible for that study. And next is the financial feasibility review and discussion with the developer, determine the fiscal feasibility. That will be completed by March of twenty twenty one and that's between the city and Mr. Sheldon as a developer. The next phase is to determine the appropriate options for city council to consider. This is based upon the space need study, the parking study and the financial feasibility study. And we expect to have that phase completed for city council presentation by the end of March and be available at the next regular city council meeting. Phase five is the details of negotiating the development processes, entitlements, the sequel to the California environmental quality act requirements, public works laws, timelines, prioritization, et cetera, including negotiations with Coastline College and any other public agencies involved. Again, that should all be completed by March thirty first. At that point, if, if the council approves this document this evening, the third amendment, we will meet with Mr. Sheldon in fourteen days to prepare specific timeline schedules, responsibilities and and feed pen for service. The goal is to have negotiations completed with Mr. Sheldon by the end of October with the presentation city council in November of twenty twenty one. Uh, it should be pointed out that this civic center study is a legacy development. It's not many cities who have the chance to replan an entire civic center for public services, community meetings and other events. In order to, to guide this pathway, a development agreement will be the final result of all the negotiations in terms of the fiscal cost to the city, fiscal revenue to be derived from the project with the net goal of the city receiving a new city hall in a residential project with no new net cost to the city. Uh, the exclusive E N A is on the agenda this evening for council consideration. It is not approving any projects or plans. It is simply setting into motion based upon all the studies referenced before. How we would get our way to the end, including a hard meeting for public city council review at the end of March of next year. Uh, there are two elements of fiscal impact that the city is going to have to have uh, move it forward on. That's the phase one environmental review. And the second is the space study needs, determine the appropriate square footage needed for a new city hall. A mayor and council, the recommendation from the staff is that the mayor and city council approve the third amendment to the exclusive negotiated agreement with Sheldon Development and authorize the interim city manager to execute the agreement. That completes my part of the presentation. If the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate that. Any, any question from uh, member of the city council? This is time for you to ask if you have any question.
Um, my word of a comment or actually maybe a combination of both. So those timelines you set forth, those are, are put in place in best interest of the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the goal, the goal, I'm sorry, the goal is to work with uh, with your Sheldon to bring this, this decision making process to the council as quickly as we can.
Those timelines that you set forth though, are, are they arbitrary? Or are they, I mean, can you, can you tell me a little bit more of how you came up with these timelines and why they're important?
Um, based upon our prior experience with these kinds of projects, uh, we think these are the schedules appropriate to negotiate and work with Mr. Sheldon. Um, the city portions of the studies, the appraisals moving, the phase one is already moving. Um, the space need study is moving and working on financial feasibility. Mr. Sheldon will need to work with the, with, he's responsible for the parking and all of these schedules we feel will be merged together for the March thirty first meeting, March thirty first date. And we think that's achievable based upon how these kind of projects come together. So they're not arbitrary, based upon prior experience.
So, and, and I just, I'm, I'm sorry, just for, just for my, my knowledge. Um, what kind of experience have you, have you, has your team? What kind of experiences your team have and what kind of projects have you guys led in the past that would make you qualified for this project?
Okay, um, I'm a retired city manager. I was a city manager in two different cities. Uh, development deputy city manager in another city. I've worked in seven different cities. I've been involved in public improvement projects most of my entire career. I was a community development director and was a public works director. Uh, my last experience as city manager was in the city of Arcadia where we, we built or rebuilt um, every single city building but part of the civic center. Um, the, the other member of my team is the, is Christine Kelly, the um, executive by present the company. Uh, she's been involved in the construction of a new city hall and in, in Bellflower. The, the development and renovation of downtown Brea uh, as well as working with the county San Bernardino when significant public works projects and public improvements for the county. She was a director of land use services for the county, um, which covered the largest, largest county in the nation. The other member of our team is Jim Rabey of Kaiser Marston Associates. He is a financial consultant. He has uh, as many years as I have, many years in the financial feasibility studies for, for cities, predominantly working for cities, counties, special districts. Um, we've worked with Kaiser Marston and Jim Rabey previously in other jurisdictions. And he's well versed in how to package and finance uh, financial feasibility studies for the client city or county. Uh, the other member of the team is Kim Lee Horn, uh, that be responsible for doing the phase one toxic environmental assessment. Uh, that's one of their specialties that within their company. I hope that answers the question of where, what our experience base is.
No, it, it definitely does. I just want to be clear that, you know, as far as the cities end, I know that one of the reasons why we brought a team like yours with such extensive experience because we are a bit, our hands are a bit tied with, in terms of the capacity our staff has to take on this type of project and the, the aggressive timeline that was being set forth. So I, I understand that there's a number of steps that we need to take and you've outlined them pretty clearly. And I, I believe that all these steps are being set forth in the best interest of the city and with the public um, the public in mind. So this is not, you weren't brought on to, you know, uh, look after a, an individual. You're here on, in, on behalf of the city of Westminster to help us, you know, move this project forward, should it be feasible. And so I just want to, I just want for the public's understanding that we have basically, we, we assemble a pretty good team. And this is, again, we've talked before about it being a legacy, legacy project. And we have, I, I believe we, again, we have sent a great, great team and looking at the best interest of the city. And this is not something that we should take lightly. This is uh, again, city property and with our tax dollars and we can't. I don't think we'll be able to have a redo on this or a second buy at the apple. Once it's done and it's in motion and the shovel's in the ground, there's no do-overs. Well, we want to make sure that our city and our taxpayers and our residents are upfront in terms of what we're, what we're on, on the hook for and what we're, what to expect. And I believe that based on what you shared with us tonight, you've outlined that for us that will put the city in, in, in a good place. So I just want to be sure that this is not personal. This is really about our city and our best interest. And again, I believe that, that you've, you've outlined that tonight and I, and I understand those timelines did not seem probably palatable to the, to the person on the other end of this, on the other end that's trying to move this forward. But I think we're looking in the best interest of our city. And so if it takes time, it takes time. I mean, just, you just can't rush it. You have to make sure you do things right and we have. I mean, I'm, I'm really concerned with the feasibility study. I'm really concerned with the type of project we'll end up with. And is it something that we want or is it something that someone else wants? And so I think that we need to be clear as what is that we want and what we can afford. And at the moment, we don't have that. So once we go through this process, I do hope there'll be a little more clarity for all of us. And hope again, that the best, the public interest stays, stays in mind. I, 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 again, I, I feel very comfortable with the work you're doing. I just want to thank you and your team for helping us out as we move forward and helping our city staff again with this, this legacy project.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, um, I agree with the, with um, council Contras uh, in term of development, you know, in the, in different phases. And uh, the timeline is there. It's just a question that uh, looking at the timeline, we think, we see that um, it will pull all the way to November twenty twenty one, which we have the year of uh, E N A, right? You asked for a year of E, E, E N A. With these um, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, uh, seven phases, do you think that we can, we have to work linearly or, or it has to be, you know, one step uh, after another, or can we work concurrently with uh, with any of these steps? To shorten the time frame. Here, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, do we need to have you? We appreciate your, your company to help the city, but at the same time, I am wondering that. the city, but at the same time, I am wondering that we need for the whole time that that, you know, your service to the city. And, you know, of course, I don't know what is the 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 cost for concern. But um I'm trying to see if there is any um, you know, uh any step that we can do concurrently so that we can uh shorten the 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 timeframe.
Is uh Kelly?
Yes.
Can you respond?
Yes, um the 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 phases we identified on the staff report, the first five will happen hopefully by by March. And that will dictate a a point in time when the city council will give directions on how to proceed on which alternative. Um the the end result will be a development agreement, which is based upon negotiations back and forth, the revenue analysis, the fiscal impacts, the type of construction the city council wants for the for the for the council chambers and related. We'll have to work with Mr. Sheldon on his private development plans. Um and all of this is required to go through CEQA, the California Criminal Quality Act. And that is a by itself a a time consuming legal process. Excuse me, that we have to follow very carefully, but we must have a defined project in place to get that started. So we will be going through things, um hopefully collectively at some parts and then separately in others. And the the one year timeframe is based upon our our best guess to avoid having further extensions of the E N A. We would like to have it done before um November of twenty twenty one, and we'll make our best efforts to try and make that happen.
Let a question from council member Nguyen that uh phase five. Can we do that concurrently with uh three and four? I believe we could. Am I right?
It so some of that work can be done. All of it, no, but some can be started quite directly. Um the the our task is to is to meet with Mr. Sheldon within fourteen days of your approval of this to talk about all these schedules and moving pieces. So yes, parts of five can move um and just be a matter of how many pieces can be gathered at what point in time. But all of this still has to go through the financial review and fiscal impact analysis. So the studies can be going on, but the studies impact the fiscal impact review. So we'll move through as fast as we can, but it won't be one step at a time.
Yeah, looking at the uh uh phase five there, you you know, is the majority of time is there from uh March thirty first uh twenty twenty one until October twenty twenty first. There are several months uh for that uh phase. Uh I'd like to see if we, you know, if there's anything prevent us from getting that phase, you know, get some of the work done before that so that we don't have to wait until after March twenty first, I mean, March thirty first twenty twenty one to start with the number five. That will prolong, I mean, it will take several moments out.
I can address this because I did write this staff report, so I apologize if the language in there is is confusing, councilmember Nguyen. What's intended to happen is is that phase five does start immediately with within fourteen days of today, um if the council chooses to approve. So it's we're we're not waiting till March thirty first to start. It's just, I was, you know, trying to put things in some semblance of an order on paper. So it it five doesn't wait for March to start. Five starts now.
Thanks for the clarification there. All right, thank you. Good. All right, um the next question that I have is that the, you know, we're talking about appraisal. It is very important, uh you know, we are waiting for that. So uh the appraisal will assist us in determining the value of the land to be sold. You know, if 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 that's the case, then, you know, uh here I saw the timeline is November twenty twenty. And I I believe that earlier we I have the confirmation from you guys that it's going to be at the end of this month that we will see the the city council will see the appraisal uh values. Am I correct that you go that we are going to be presented with the the number? Something that we can see to see whether that, you know, uh the negotiation that that, you know, the 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 deal is going on i- is is right in where we we expect it to be?
Well, I I'm going to defer part of that back to the city attorney because we're in property negotiations. Some of the negotiations are considered private between the developer and the city. And I'm not sure I can tell you right this second, we can make the appraisal public because it is property negotiations. I don't know, uh Christian can answer that question right now.
Yes, I think while we're negotiating the price over it, that would be something that we would keep confidential, but it would be a public document at at some point.
Okay.
But for as far as the council's concerned, uh yes, that would be something that would be coming back to you. And my understanding is as indicated on the staff report, late November sometime, we'd be having that discussion.
Okay, the next question is, uh when I see that the staff recommend the mayor and city council approve the third amendment to the exclusive negotiating uh agreement, what is that third amendment? Can can staff uh give us some uh explanation of how you want to have it done?
Well, the the third amendment is basically the summation of the original, the first, the second, and all amendments going forward. This is a more uh more detailed uh E N A to try and wrap up loose ends and be very clear on what we're doing. So all of it is such as sequence from first through third now.
Oh, okay, I I'm sorry. Okay, I thought that it's going to be an addition of uh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Right, I have a question. Are we going to have uh Mr. Sheldon's presentation? For this item?
I don't know that that was contemplated as part of the way the item is listed. The way
Okay, got it.
The the way it's listed is civic center project update and third and and third amendment. So I think that might be a fruitful thing to agendize for a meeting, maybe even in the near future, to allow him to do an update like that.
Okay, got it. Okay, I appreciate that. All right, so any uh uh let's see, any uh any other question from a member of the council? Any other question or concerns from member of the city council for this item? So basically, a staff, I'll be okay that we go to uh concurrently have face number five along with three and four. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, sir. That's understood.
Right, all right. And other than that, the the like our staff recommended may city council approve the third amendment of this F E N A. Okay. So I move as recommended.
I second it.
And before you vote, if I if I could, you you were, there was some discussion about phase five. There is language in the E N A, in particular on page three, uh section four B that talks about, say, with the CEQA analysis. That's that's what happens in phase five, and that's what's going to take a lot of time. Um it just naturally is going to take time. Parties agree that the CEQA analysis for the project agreement and the project will be commenced as soon as reasonably possible. So as soon as that's reasonably possible, we will proceed with that. So uh not to hold things up. So we've got language in there to deal with that. I think the important thing when it comes to CEQA those, we've got to define what the project is. Uh once it's defined, then you can analyze what the impact of it is. And so but yes, there's language in there that would help us to do that as soon as possible. I just want to make sure that's
Yeah, another question for staff. Uh when will we have appraisal report and financial feasibility? When will we have that done? It's at the end of this month or a couple more days or?
The the appraisal report and all the other studies being done will all be morphed together. And hopefully will be in a package to just give the council an overview by the end of March. So that's just one of those things that has to get finished and woven into the discussion and review.
All right. So do we have any other question from?
Yes, uh so
At what point do we, do we, or does the public or the council decide what we want? What part of the plan is that in there? Is that in there?
I'm I'm sorry, maybe ideally at the end of March, we will have finished the the space study, the phase one talks uh environmental analysis, the financial feasibility review in some form or fashion, somewhat some part of CEQA. And and more importantly, the parking study will which will then drive the alternative site planning discussions. So we will have a lot of information for for the council at a public meeting towards the end of March.
That's when we can decide what what is that we truly want? Because I remember once upon a time we talked about uh, you know, it's been three years ago now, but probably old information. We want to know what the public wants, what we want versus being told what we should have. And just trying to figure out what point do we do that? Because one of the questions I have is like, for example, the senior center. I I don't see that being part of this project. It's kind of a little standalone piece. So I don't know at what point do we decide what we want to have versus what we should have. So that happens after the feasibility study and after the the land study, correct?
Uh that could be part of the study we're doing right now. The senior center um under Mr. Sheldon's plan does not show any modifications, so we're going to have to discuss that with him. Um if that's a council up priority as well, we'll wrap that into into negotiations.
It just seems like there's a lot. I I just can't understand what the but what the public benefit is to rush this. Like what, why? Why is it a public benefit to rush through this process and, you know, run through it? I just don't understand. Can can someone help me with that?
I I I I don't think using a rush uh is is the right um the right word, because the way that I see is that, you know, we have a one year uh defined it here. And, you know, we we agree that this this might be take one year, but my my question to the to the consultant is that is there any phase that can be worked concurrently? So that we can save time. Then we might not need, or they might say that you don't need us for the whole year. Maybe we can complete this in eight months and then we are out. So, you know, I I I tried to find to see whether from from the city standpoint, I want to make sure that yes, if we do need the the um the consultant, yes, by all means, we'll do it. But if we don't need them by then, by certain the times before the year up, then, you know, we 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 have to to use that. We have to do that.
Yeah, I have a question for our city attorney. Uh do you think that it's really helpful that if our council, we should have a special meeting to define a project roughly for next week or before the end of this month?
Well, um it's up to the council what you want to do, but yes, I to some degree, it would be helpful if you have ideas about what you absolutely don't want to do. Um it's always good to have options open, but if there are certain things that you say are are very interested in having those issues explored and not others. Um I think that helps to define what we're looking at by way of possible options. So if you want to do that, that would definitely help. Um so, yes.
Well, what would come first, though, because you mentioned the feasibility, how much money we have, the property value and all that that piece, wouldn't we need to define how much we have to work with before we decide what we want?
And and that could be part of that discussion as well. And in terms of, do you want to add the senior center in or not? Uh if that's something that the
Well, so so I have an idea. So uh this meeting, uh we only consider the E N A. And a city club will uh talk to uh council member regarding this one schedule. So we may have another special meeting before this month uh to define a project.
Is that part of the motion?
So is that, can we do that in lieu of the motion?
What are we just do? We had a motion in a second uh to approve the E N A. I think you should deal with that first.
Okay, so we have the motion in a second to approve the E N A on the floor.
Yes, I have a motion from Mayor Ta seconded by councilmember Nguyen, and that is as recommended to approve the third amendment to the exclusive negotiating agreement with with Sheldon Development LLC and authorize the interim city manager to execute the agreement. So we'll do the roll call vote for that. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
May.
Okay, councilmember Doe?
Uh abstaining.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carried three, one, one with councilmember Contreras, no, and councilmember Doe abstaining.
All right, for a special meeting to define a project, city attorney, do we need another motion?
I think I think you can uh provide direction to just go ahead and schedule a meeting and have, as you as you indicated to the city clerk, if she could
I appreciate that.
She could find a a time that works.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next item. Six point one. Resolution reforming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three with declared assistance of a local emergency.
I have question for um for a city manager. Uh I I read your daily report and um at first we would think you would think you would thinking that uh we might change the color from uh red to orange uh at the end of uh October, and then we move into November. And I believe the report from last night is you anticipate by the end of this month. But reading this report here, um I saw that you mentioned that uh the number of of confirmed cases and deaths continue to increase. Uh I found that uh it conflicting information there. If 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 the the number of deaths continue to increase because of the coro- uh coronavirus, then how can we expect to have it at the end of this month? Can I have your um explanation on that?
Of course. So that that is driven by the county and the state, those uh decisions. Actually, the state decides which tier we're in. Um at one point, this the county was believed that we were very hopeful that we were going to move into orange. And as our surrounding cities are feeling more pain and more loss, um we've also been experiencing some not to the extent that they have, but they've been pushed back, some of them have been pushed back into purple. So the thought is now that if they're in purple, there's no possible way that the state's going to allow us to move into orange knowing that um our surrounding cities and people that come into our cities are in in a purple tier. So we're just trying to hold on to red at this point, but that is not a decision that that uh the city or the county can make. We submit the information to the state. They make that decision. What's before you tonight is just continuing to keep our city under a state of local emergency, and that has to come to you, I believe, every sixty days. Um so this is just a, unfortunately, it's looking like you'll probably see this again in another sixty days and into the near future. So um yes, it does not look hopeful. Our our city alone has been um since last week. Our numbers have gone up as well. Um I just would like to remind everybody to wear masks, social distance, you know, wash your hands. Um that's very important, and we have to all stick in this together. But yes, um unfortunately, things are looking bleak right now, but we're still hopeful. And Orange County has been doing fantastic. You know, there I had a lot of the counties around us, and that's that's good news for us.
With that, I move to approve. Second. All right, we have the motion and second to approve this resolution.
That is a motion made by councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and to approve as recommended, which is adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Next, we have common and request for agenda item, city council agency members, including AB one, two, three, four, report when required. Vice Mayor Ho? Before my will speak, I would like to uh, send my condolences to Vice Mayor Ho and her family. Uh, Vice Mayor Ho passed away. Uh, Vice Mayor Ho's father passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was Colonel of ARBN and really well respected member in a community. So I'd like to, um, like to send my condolences to you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate um, the support I uh, have received. Um, and um, it, it has been very tough on my family. Uh, thank you for those words. Um, my father passed away October twenty ninth and um, while we're on the topic, I'd like to invite uh, everybody to um, attend his funeral and I will, I don't know if I have already, but I will be um, sending um, sending out the uh, yes, the um, what would you call that? Um, funeral um, details. And it'll be held at Peak Cemetery on the twenty eighth and twenty first. Thank you very much. At this time, I don't have any new agenda. And uh, I'd like to also acknowledge that today's Veterans Day. Um, my uh, thoughts are with the family of those who um, sacrificed and paid this for our freedom. Um, and um, just like my father, um, our veterans dedicated um, to protect and to serve us. And um, because of them, we have what we have today, the freedom we have today, we're indebted to them. And I thank you very much for, for all your words and um, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Councilmember Contreras?
Um, my condolences to Vice Mayor Ho and her family. Sorry for your loss. Um, I have nothing other than just a quick reminder on the uh, basic control that we continue to tip and toss water. Mosquitoes are still out there and continue to be an issue here in our community. They're not going to go anytime soon. And we can all do our part by tipping and tossing any standing water and um, throughout our inside and outside our home. Uh, mosquitoes breed in very small, um, very small containers and, and it doesn't take much for them to multiply. So just be mindful. Um, and I believe that is awesome. Thank you.
And also, I also want to thanks uh, Councilmember Contreras for his dedication, serving the community. Uh, his last meeting will be in December, I believe. I really appreciate that for the last eight years, I had an opportunity to work with Councilmember Contreras uh, to achieve a lot of, a lot of good project for the city. And I believe the community really, really recognize and acknowledge that Councilmember Contreras go above and beyond uh, his time and energy uh, to make sure that our city, we recognize and honor a man that's family. So uh, at the bottom of my heart, really want to thanks uh, Councilmember Contreras for his dedication in serving the community.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I, I hope this, I'm sure uh, you, I'm hoping this is not goodbye um, uh, Councilman um, Contreras. So I, uh, I, I will say um, my words um, to you. I think at the next meeting, um, is that correct? You will be at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm not dead yet. I'm still alive.
Okay. Because I wouldn't want to miss saying goodbye to you. So I mean, thank you.
Councilmember Doe?
I thank you very much. I just want to stand my deepest condolences to Vice Mayor Ho and her family. And I'd like to acknowledge uh, uh, today's Veterans Day and I want to thank you for all uh, our veterans. Uh, thank you for serving our country and protecting our freedom. Uh, I am grateful for your sacrifice today and every day. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, uh, my condolences to uh, Vice Mayor Ho and our prayers and uh, thoughts will be with you and your family.
Thank you.
Uh, also that um, happy Veteran Days and thank you for those who serve our country. And I don't have anything for today. I don't have any agenda for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. And uh, once again, I like to honor our veterans, our men and women who've been sacrificed for our freedom. And I like to adjourn the meeting in honoring our veterans and also in remembrance and in honoring Vice Mayor Ho fathers, Mr. Ho Si Kai, who uh, passed away last month. He was uh, ARBN Colonel and very well respected member in a community. And actually, he was a really good friend of my father-in-law. So Vice Mayor Ho, once again, so please accept our condolences.
Thank you very much. Thank you. My mother also hurt you. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. So our regular meeting will be uh, Wednesday, December nine, twenty, twenty at seven PM. But if we have a special meeting, uh, the city club will inform the community. So meeting adjourned.